All right, I'm going to call this meeting of the Gladwin Community's Board of Education to order. At 7:30, will you please, Mr. Secretary, will you call the board? Excuse me.
Trevor Gravel.
Here.
Kelly Gower.
Here.
Eric Deon.
Here.
Linda Winerzki.
Here.
Lisa Schwager.
Here.
Brad Whitrow.
Here.
Sally Hightower.
Here.
We have established a quorum. Will you please stand for the flag of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do you have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, Trevor has moved to accept the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Eric has seconded. It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Are, is there any discussion on the agenda? If all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next on the agenda is the approval of the draft minutes of the previous meeting, which is the draft of the regular meeting of April the 8th and the workshop minutes of April 22nd. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes?
All right, Eric has moved that we, no, Trevor.
No.
Eric has, okay. Eric has moved that we accept the minutes, the draft minutes, as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Trevor has seconded. Is there any discussion on the minutes? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We do not have any committee minutes, we do not have the BSOT. BSOT, okay. Madam Treasurer, would you present the approval of the bills?
Yes, we're done at 7:15 and to go over the bills. And there were a couple of questions that were answered. There is one, one bill on page four, and it is for $64. For the fifth one down, that is going to be a void. So we'll be subtracting $64 from the total of those general fund bills. So I will move to approve the current bills of $168,187.54 and the prepaid bills of $1,057,208.43.
All right, it has been moved. Second. Let me do the motion, please. It has been moved by Linda to accept the bills as presented. Kelly has seconded the motion, correct?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion here is. Next is communication, and we have presentations to the board, and I do believe we have candidates who are requesting to speak for the RSD election, correct? Who would like to go first? Ms. Sarah?
Okay. I'm not sure I have that for all the administration, but I typed up something. I was going to hand out my resume, and I thought that was kind of boring and not fun at all, and if you're going to be able to come on, it would have been fun. So what I've done is basically lay out just a very brief history professionally. I've served on the RSD Board of Education for two years, that was only two years ago, which makes me, and most of you know, a very new board member. There's still a ton to learn, but I think some of the highlights include that I have worked for Clare and Gladwin County for a very long time. My job has offered me the blessing of really serving my community. On top of that, I've served on the boards and continue to serve on the boards, representing Gladwin on the board for the brothers and sisters. I represent Gladwin for 2-on-1, and Gladwin County there's, excuse me. Those boards, as you know, are very different from board education. No matter how long you serve on boards, I think board education is very different. But I'm still learning. I think being a new board member does offer a way of seeing things a little differently. Very few things pass by without question, sometimes probably to the dismay of sheer press or our superintendent, but I think it's a good thing to be new on a board, or too many of you understand that, because many of you are new. I put some, just brief highlights. Right now, I work at the Health Department, serving six counties, but my focus when I was hired is Clare and Gladwin Counties. When I worked at 1016, I covered Clare and Gladwin Counties with drug prevention. I had the opportunity to work with Gladwin Schools quite often in that position, including doing training for different school, at different buildings. I have worked, I'm bringing different programs here, including working with your health teachers for your red ribbon awareness, drug free awareness. I'm trying to think of all the, many things I've done here, but I would like to make sure that you have any questions to answer. If you have any questions for me, or regarding, you know, any decisions we've made with the RSD, hopefully you do know, and if you'd like to talk to our superintendent, I'm the first person to say how this affects our local districts, because, you know, I live three blocks away. These are our kids, and they don't want to see something happening, you know, on a different level that affects our kids' lives. So I hope I represent you well, and I hope that you will continue what I'm saying.
Bonnie, do you have any questions for Sarah?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mrs. Darlington.
Yes, thank you. I'm Carol Darlington, for those of you who may not know me. And as many of you know, and those of you who do not know, I am a lifelong resident of Gladwin County, and my great-grandsons here, they went through the school system here, and now I'm looking at grandchildren coming up through the, through the system soon, hopefully, so have been very active during that period of time, very involved with the schools, continue to be very interested in the in-school process, obviously. I served on the Gladwin Board for four years during that period of time. I served as board president for three years. Enjoyed that time and the opportunity to give back to my community. Then served on the RSD Board for five years. I, for personal reasons, resigned from the board two years ago, and now I'm looking at going back into that position after that two years ago. I have extensive background, as you can see, you should have a letter from me, extensive background in regards to education and some of the things that I've been involved in. My title now, and my job now at Mid Michigan Community College is institutional research and grants management. So I do the state and federal reporting, and I'm aware of changes and things that happen, not just at the post-secondary level, but at the state level as well. And as you know, we're always in a changing mode, it seems like, and try to stay abreast of those things as well. For 17 years, I did occupational education at the college, and we have a very strong connection with our CTE program. The RSD, of course, runs the CTE program, and the CTE program is located at Mid Michigan Community College. And as I worked in that for 17 years, I did articulation agreements. I awarded the credits to the students that reached their articulation agreement, and worked with co-op students, those kinds of things. So I've been, you know, at the secondary level, I'm very much aware of what's happening with the big school as well. And now, of course, dual-enroll students, I've taught psychology for, what year is it? And have a lot of Gladwin students in my dual-enroll classes, as I'm sure you're aware that there are a large number doing it right now. The reason that I'm running for the position again, and wanting to be back on the RSD Board, is because I see a real need and a real connection that needs to take place between Mid Michigan Community College and the RSD again. It was very strong. It was a good chance to use resources, and we did that. Many of you are aware that probably in the last four years, five years, while I was on the board, that technology really kicked off, and we changed how we staff technology. And under the auspices of Penn Schinvar, which is RSD, we developed a program that's in place now, and it's a money saver, and it's a, it's a great use of our resources. We also have done a number of other things with the RSD that you're probably not even aware of. MID does their groundwork now, else there's a contract. Obviously, we get paid for gracious people, but we do get paid for that. And also, things like our HVAC, we have a person on board, John, who's our HVAC person. He goes over our, and does the maintenance and those kinds of things. So it's a real cost-saving, it's a good resource saving, and so that connection is key, and being able to sit on that board, hear the concerns, the needs, and those kinds of things, and then go back to MID and vice versa, that was very positive. And so hopefully, we can do that again. I'm 100% education, obviously. I work in education. I teach in education. I am the candidate that lives in the RSD district and also works full-time in the RSD district, so I care every day. And so I'm asking that you take a look at what I listed there. One of the things I didn't list, I don't know if I did CBA classes, but I've had a number of CBA classes, which are the MASBs, classes in education. I've had a number of those, kind of on the workshops, so I've had a lot of college initiatives. I would appreciate your support, and I would love to represent Gladwin one more time on the RSD Board. Questions?
And Joanne Clay came in from Beaverton. If you'd like to speak to us, so ready to hit.
Sorry that I'm late, for I was thinking you were at the high school, so I apologize for that. So, but I did notice that you do a really good job at keeping those doors locked. I'm a candidate, probably primarily for Beaverton. I'm the one that works in the school district. I've worked in Beaverton Schools as a school nurse for over 18 years now, so I kind of have some firsthand knowledge about what goes on in a local district, and the struggles that, that you see, not only with the kids and their families and their parents, because that is so much of what schools are about, but also, education has changed. In 18 years since I started, man, our school district went from 1,850 kids and growing to where we were building a new building and all of that, to we're closing schools, and, you know, it used to be if you worked in the school district, people really looked up to you and thought that you were, I mean, that it, teachers were respected, educators were respected, the community looked up to you. And now, it seems like it's really taking a beating. And those are some of the perspectives you get when you work in the school system, and, you know, kids, when they got in trouble at school, were in big trouble at home, but now that doesn't necessarily seem to be the case. So there's those issues that need to be addressed and seen, too, when you're talking to the public, when you're, not in those types of terms, but that you really can see what's going on in education, the struggles of professional educators, the struggles that the principals are facing, the administration, the superintendents. There's some major struggles there. It's important that we have the education and the curriculum and the training, like poverty workshops and things like that, that the RSD, when we put together a full community, these things are all great and things that need to be done, but it's so important that we can communicate to the public. And I think that's one of the strengths, they're not intimidated by anything. Really, one of the hardest things I do is just have to talk about myself, and I apologize for that. It's so much easier to talk about how great schools are and what a great direction we're going, and while they keep cutting our funding, it's, there's some struggles. I care very deeply about the schools and about the families in our community, and being on the board affects all of those. And I really appreciate that you are willing to have us here to talk, and that you are willing to take your time out of your meetings for this. Do you have any questions for me? Did you receive my letter? Am I, okay, go ahead, Sally.
My question to you, Joanne, is being that you're a present employee of Beaverton, and you're requesting move to be on the RSD Board, and do you feel that there could be a conflict of interest when you have to make a possible decision that would affect Beaverton from the auspices of the RSD Board? Is there would be a conflict of interest or not?
I would not see that as a conflict of interest, because I would see myself as not only representing Beaverton, but all of the schools, Clare, Harrison, Gladwin. And you make those decisions based on the good of everybody, not based on the good of one individual district. Put it like going to our common calendar, you make, some of those are compromises that you make, and good compromises. I think that all of the things that have been done so far have been great.
Any other further questions for Mrs. Clay? Thank you very much.
Thank you once again. I'll let Ms. speak.
Are there any other presentations to be presented? All right, presentations from the board. Don't all speak at once. Could you identify yourself, then?
Charmaine Catherine. The past six months, I've tried to obtain free things under freedom of information from this board, starting back in October. I had asked for composite documents that were brought to board meetings, which on March 25th, I was approved for. I was asking for being outside of meetings, regular specials, and on the 25th of March, I was approved for that. I've also tried to get information about criminal background checks, which started with our superintendent presenting volunteer who had requested to be approved to volunteer, and that person had a felony conviction. It started back in October. I didn't know that this was a big deal, but it certainly turned into a big deal. November 19th, I did give a written request for that, volunteer application and background check. On November 28th, I was denied for the reason that it was, according to the denial, it was information that was exempt from disclosure. However, the exemption referred to people that are employed by the school. On December 10th, I gave, request the, request to answer questions, which I didn't know that you don't have to answer under freedom of information, although you're not prohibited from answering questions. And I had asked if the criminal record clearance existed, if it was ever obtained, and if the school had the documents, but those questions were not answered. March 11th, I gave a written appeal to the board, stated the reason that I thought it was appropriate to have this information, and the laws that I felt related to it. And underneath all of that, which I stated again in this appeal letter, I felt that the public has a right to know that, in fact, required and appropriate criminal background checks are being obtained as part of a thorough investigation regarding who is being allowed to volunteer and work with our children in school. I stated that it was particularly concerning that the person had a felony drug conviction. That was my original prompt for requesting information. So I asked for, in an effort to compromise and work this out with this board, I asked for that I could receive the background statements without any identifying information on it, which is satisfying my greatest concern, and that is whether the required appropriate criminal background checks are being obtained for persons prior to working or volunteering in our school, per the reby school code and this school policy. That was on April, on April 15th, I received a denial that the request as previously stated is denied. That was not request I previously said, I previously had asked for information that would have included identifying information. I feel like the past six months, I have walked through your process as best I can, and I don't think it's a reasonable outcome. And I'm wondering if everybody on this board is in agreement that we need to go to court over this and spend more tax payers' dollars for one document to see whether or not our children are being protected with appropriate background checks?
Ms. Catherine would like to address that. First of all, you have heard from our legal advisor. Yes, you have, and the person in question was not approved.
No.
To volunteer.
They were not.
And our legal advisor has stated that that is information that is not appropriate for you to have as a public member of the public. And therefore, if you feel that you would like us to spend further tax dollars and take it away from children, then you have that right to sue this board for that information. But I think you've already received an answer from our legal advisor.
You signed it. So if it did come from your legal advisor, it doesn't say that. So I just know that. No, I don't want to take money away from these children by taxpayer dollars, but I do believe that this is a public board, and that there is a right for the public to have public information, and I think this is very concerning. And no, I don't want to. That's why I have spent six months trying to go through this process to avoid it.
The laws that govern the release of information of various topics through FOIA, there are several exemptions that exist. The board has an obligation and a duty to make sure that they don't release information that could frankly put them in a position where they have violated the law. That's why FOIA requests that you're referring to have been referred to their legal counsel, and the responses that you have were unprepared by them. So the, the information that you're requesting is information that we have been told is not available or is not subject to release. The volunteer that you continually refer to as being so concerning was not approved. So you are concerned that there are people that have felony convictions that may be volunteering in the district, in this case, the one you're referring to, what?
It isn't that volunteer, it's what was underneath, whether or not the criminal background check was run and is being run, and are our children being protected by that?
What?
I can't get an answer to that. Is that exempt from disclosure? I don't understand that.
No, the answer to your question is that our board does do criminal history checks on volunteers.
On all volunteers?
We do, we do them on, on the volunteers that apply to the volunteers in the district. We do do ID chat checks on the people.
And so you did one on the person that had the drug problem?
That, that, again, that's information that the board responded.
That's not even identifying. It's, did you do one or didn't you do one?
And again, that's information that we have talked to our legal folks, and they have told us we can't release, and I just have to do the threshold.
Okay. But let me clarify this. The last one that I asked for, that asked for specifically no identifying information, just the criminal background check, and it said that it was previously denied, but that's what I previously asked for.
Now, may I address this, please?
Definitely.
We are elected here to make sure that we cover all of this area. I mean, you're an elected person on this board, you can see that, but until that is, the law says it's none of your business.
It wasn't any of the board's business either.
Yes, it is, because we're elected to address those things.
Well, I'm just saying, Julie, at that time that this was all brought up, back in October, you expressed concerns about this person, that you were not going to support them. And no, that person was not approved.
And I think, and I think, Charmaine, that that's what's best left is, the person that you're referring to was not approved as a volunteer. The FOIA request that you submitted are then in part upheld and in part denied, and that's where it stands, and that's where it stands for tonight. So we appreciate your comments.
So I'm freedom of information, so even though you referred to something that wasn't what I asked for.
Your, the last freedom of information request that you submitted to the board was responded to by the board, and that's where it stands right now. If you'd like to submit another freedom of information act request, you're always welcome to do that.
For the same thing.
Whatever you choose to put into the request, it's totally up to you.
Just simply a background check without identifying?
Again, you can request that if you so choose, and the board will respond it within the October timeline.
And you've already denied it.
I'm just trying to answer your question.
Well, it wouldn't make any sense to do that. So I'm just trying to tell you that I feel like on my part, for six months, I've done everything that I should be doing.
And I'm telling you, and as Sally has shared with you, the board has to, has to also look out for the rights of the, for the individuals that have a slightly volunteered subject.
I agree.
The right of the public to know information, and the right of the volunteer who has requested to be approved, it's this board's job to balance that. And when they seek that balance, they often employ the advice of legal counsel, and they have in this matter. And our legal counsel has told us that we have to respect the privacy rights of the person who has asked to be a volunteer, and in doing so, that information that you've requested is not subject to FOIA, in the opinion of our, of our attorneys. So I have to leave it there.
I understand.
And if you would like to continue to request it, you may, and the board will respond appropriately.
Well, that wouldn't make any sense. I just simply want to know if there was a background check run on that person. That could possibly be exempt from disclosure.
I understand.
I don't really understand this, Rick. If it's just a yes or no answer, why cannot you say, yes, we did a background check before I brought it to the board, or no, I didn't? Why could you not say that?
I suppose I could.
Why don't you?
Well, because everything that we have said to you, or you in the past, has always come back in some twisted way in an attempt to pride ourselves on board. So we are very careful with how we respond. And in this case, we're being very careful with how we respond because of the, the, quite frankly, the acts that you have had to grind with the board and with me. So we're being very careful.
That would be, wow.
We're being very careful with how we respond. Again, we need to make sure that we answer your questions within the legal frameworks that our attorneys have advised us. I, I don't choose to engage in conversation with you over the matters, quite frankly, because in the past, things that we, when we have tried to engage in conversation, it's often come back in a twisted fashion to try to hurt this board or me.
So over, you're referring now to what I have just said. So over the six months that I have tried to work with this board, do you call that an act to grind?
I haven't said that.
You've posted that.
What I'm saying is I, that's not what I said.
And I didn't twist anything? I've come to this board every step, the way I was supposed to, not twisted anything, don't have an act to grind, just want to know information.
And I, and you have the right to know that information, and I have suggested that if you have, if you have information that you would like to request, follow the FOIA process, and the board will respond appropriately.
Exactly.
Exactly. And continue to do that. And the board will continue to respond to your FOIA requests appropriately.
No, it's not appropriate. Do you tell me the reason you're not responding is because of what I might do? I haven't done anything, but follow your process.
No, I'm not saying. With your FOIA request, the board will respond within the legal framework that the law provides. In response to your question of, just asking me a question not covered by FOIA, I'm choosing not to answer that question directly because I, quite frankly, worry because of the repeated attacks that have come, and I, and I don't want to put myself or this board in a situation where that happens again.
What? Have I, in six months, what happened?
I think this topic has been covered enough.
I believe it has.
Five minutes is up.
All right, fine. But don't suggest that I've done something wrong when I have it.
We have not suggested you've done anything wrong.
You just said I did.
I don't believe I did.
If you'd like to FOIA that information, please do, and look, respond accordingly.
I did, and you didn't.
Then if you feel it was not responded to appropriately, or the FOIA request was, there's further information that you would like, or wasn't clarified, then please place another FOIA request in front of the board.
Is this an agreement that the board comes to? I mean, is, is that an assumption I should make, that the board has agreed as a collective board?
No, we take each FOIA request No, we take each FOIA request separately.
Right, but the board agrees collectively? I don't know that. I'm answering.
Again, Sarah, you can make public comment or in public comment, but this banter is getting nowhere. If you have questions, you're welcome to bring them and ask, and bring them to my attention, and I'll answer them if.
You're not the board.
I'm seeing specific questions.
No, but I represent the board, and this discussion is over.
Fine.
All right. Is there any communication from board members? Uh, Ms. Elena, does the student representative report?
Hello. Um, okay. I'm gonna start out with what NHS is going to do this Saturday. This Saturday, um, about twenty-five NHS members and a few key club members are going to meet at my home. And then we are going to travel to the different cemeteries across Gladwin County and the weekend before Memorial Day, so we're gonna put flags on veterans' graves to honor the sacrifice of big names in this school tree. Um, also, the art show was this past weekend, and the art classes and the wood tech classes. We're working all year on making amazing masterpieces to exhibit during this show, and there was a silent auction, and our visual arts classes made a lot in the struggle and situation for budgeting and everything, and they got enough to buy supplies for next year. So it's great that our visual arts classes are gonna get to advance and move on, and already here. Our blood drive was last Friday, and we got ten dollars for every person who attempted to donate, and I was working the sign-in area, and we had over ninety people sign in, so that's great. I don't know how many people were considered to attend this, but all the money we raised is going to go towards realizing life in the summer. Our picnic, our senior picnic at the high school is going to take place May twenty-fourth, and I already read it all the way to the book, and everyone's really excited. Teacher appreciation week was this February the tenth, and we made a bunch of baked goods for the teachers and administration, and we gave them their heartfelt note to write to them, and I think it went over as a, as a success. Like, I mean, who doesn't like their youth? The band concert was this past weekend, and it was really, really good. We have some talented people at Gladwin High School. Our choir pop concert is Saturday, Sunday, May nineteenth, it's a Sunday, and I'm really excited to see all the senior spotlight from that. The Sound of Music was the first weekend of May, and if you didn't go, you really missed out. It was a great show. It was amazing. And the last thing is graduation is June second, and I guess it's our, see you all next. It's my school board meeting.
Not in jeopardy, if not for extra. You have before you in written form the administrators' reports, and are there any questions, additional questions for any of the administrators on their reports? I have one for him. Uh, I see in your report that you're continuing to try to, um, collect users' counts, accounts. I assume that's going well, in most parts. That's good. Um, I want to thank you for doing that. We appreciate it for you. It's a struggle in all districts. In many respects, it's greater. Wait, is there just fortunate, has some wonderful tech people that, that really took it now, but forgot how to do a play? I guess they answer every time. Uh, we have no written reports from committees. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, are there any H, any information items?
None.
Uh, discussion items?
None of those.
Uh, any new business on action items?
No business.
All right, then we'll move on to new business. We have been notified by Mr. Zagata to place Josh Shattuck as a possible candidate for tenure. Uh, Mr. Zagata, would you like to say anything further about Mr. Shattuck?
Uh, you know, this is Josh's fourth year in our, in our district, and my, my third year with him, and he continues, you know, it's, it's no secret that he is, you know, seeking employment in Indiana at the end of this year. And, you know, we, you know, wish him luck, I wish him luck, but at, at this point, you know, we still, um, by law have to either grant or deny tenure, and Josh continues even though he's, you know, not planning on being here, uh, that baseball game the other night, and he was volunteering there, um, after school, and still continuing to help out in transition with Tyler Ford with football and, and those things, and I see no reason not to grant any tenure.
Well, with that statement, I would like to move that we approve the tenure of Mr. Josh Shattuck. Is there a second? All second. All right, I have moved, and Eric has seconded the approval of tenure for Mr. Josh Shattuck. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Uh, Mr. Shattuck has tenured. Uh, next on the agenda is teacher retirement. We have received a statement from Mrs. Suzanne Schellenbarger that at the end of the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year, she is planning on retiring. And I have known Mrs. Schellenbarger before she was Mrs. Schellenbarger, when she first came to teach social studies here at the high school, when it was the high school here. Now, we're almost right across the hallway. Um, and I would move that we move to accept her retirement request with regret. Is there a second?
One.
Okay, I have moved, and Lisa has seconded that we accept Mrs. Schellenbarger's resignation with regret. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is the Clare Gladwin RESD tentative budget resolution. And you have before you, uh, the two-page budget proposal. And do I have a motion, um, to accept this, and we will, if it is accepted, we will do a roll call vote? So do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the vote.
All right, Trevor has moved that we accept the budget, uh, as presented. Is there a second?
No second.
Eric has seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, Mr. Secretary, would you call the roll for the vote?
Trevor Gavone?
Yes.
Kelly Gower?
Yes.
Eric Deon?
Yes.
Linda Winarsky?
Yes.
Lisa Schwager?
Yes.
Brad Whitrow?
Yes.
Sally Hightower?
Yes. All right, the motion has passed seven zero. So we will move that the RESD has approved of that. All right, and next we're moving on to the financial policy and procedures manual. Uh, we have that in front of you. And I know that all of you have read this word for word. Julie, thank you for putting this together. Would you like to make any statements about this?
It wasn't because I wanted to.
Okay.
No, it was, it was a requirement this year for, basically for Title I, for our audit. Um, I did receive a letter Friday that the state has approved the warning, so that is...
We will have to do a second reading. I assume that will be our opinion. All right. Um, and we move on to, we have been, we have a volunteer request on the background check, and that person has requested a closed session. Uh, so I will resolve that we move into closed session. Is there a second on my resolution?
I'll second that motion.
Right, it has been moved and seconded. Uh, Mr. Secretary, will you call the roll?
Trevor Gavone?
Yes.
Um, Kelly Gower?
Yes.
Eric Deon?
Yes.
Linda Winarsky?
Yes.
Lisa Schwager?
Yes.
Brad Whitrow?
Yes.
Sally Hightower?
Yes. Okay, all those parties that are not involved in this request, if you please accept the libary, we will come back to this open session after all. We will.